Marissa, you ready?
I'm all set, in case you couldn't see my thumbs up.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I'm going back and forth with two screens here, making sure I've got everybody. The only person I don't see is Brenda. Am I missing her somewhere?
I also do not see her.
Okay. Everybody stand by one second here. Let me get my camera on. Okay, this is Board of Finance Chairman Mike McCoo calling to order the special budget meeting of Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM for the town of Wellington, Connecticut. We do not need to see any alternates. We have our regular members present. Next is approval of minutes. I have not had time to review the minutes. They were quite long. If other people are ready, we can certainly do it. So I'll entertain a motion if people have reviewed it.
Oh, sure. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of
eighteen?
March 18th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion on the motion to accept the minutes. I did give them a quick skim. Good work, Marissa. I think you were able to capture everything, but I didn't have a chance to check it really for any accuracy. Not that I'm questioning your accuracy. Any other question? All right, Marissa, let's call about.
Christina?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
Staying.
Mike?
I'll abstain also.
Okay.
Okay. We're on to present to speak. We have a large group tonight, so I'm guessing we'll have some people present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments. To maintain progress, stay on topic and maintain decorum. For those of you who haven't attended Board of Finance meetings before, we'll look for people who are supplying a video feed to wave their hands first, and then once we've talked to anyone in that group, anyone who isn't providing video, we will definitely get to you as well. So everyone hang in there. So first, someone who's supplying video, if you'd like to speak, wave your hand and I'll call on you one at a time. And pardon me because I have two screens. Lori Semperban, go ahead.
Okay. Your job on the Board of Finance is to balance the needs of the town with keeping taxes as low as possible. I know that this is a difficult task. You also have some very vocal folks in the town and on the board who want to see no increases for the sake of no increases. This has been the case for several years. Some of these people find someone whom they value as experts to support their claims. Some cut requested budgets by random percentages because they don't like the size of the increase, and some are not doing the research of the processes and function of the Board of Finance. As far as referencing experts to predict bloom and doom for the town and state, you can find other experts who forecast a more positive picture. For example, in the Hartford Business Journal's HBJ's 2021 Economic Forecast article, Yukon Professor Lanza predicts a year of moderate recovery, while Patrick Flaherty, the Assistant Director of Research at the Connecticut Department of Labor, predicts, quote, "Pent-up demand for services that were delayed or avoided during the pandemic will lead to a spike in employment in late summer or early fall of 2021. Our economy has struggled, but some of us see a positive outlook in the future. I propose that you consider the actual budgets and the specific increases as whether or not they are needs and not just wants. An example is the budget for the Wellington Fire Department, number one. At the last meeting, when you cut their increase from 17% to 10%, you forced them to make cuts in required equipment or maintenance. How safe or supportive of them is this for our volunteer fire department that everyone on this board purports to appreciate? Another example, in the discussion of the park and rec increase last week, some members of this board automatically wanted to reduce the budget because it was higher. Either those members did not read the materials presented by the department, or they do not understand the math. Half the costs were shifted over from human services to make this an entirely park and rec budget item, and you wanted to cut just because it was an increase. This board also nickel and dimes budgets and departments to where it is actually more expensive to function under budget. For example, if Park Public Works has two weeks of sweeping scheduled and someone calls in sick, the schedule has to be adjusted for other tasks because there aren't enough people to cover the sweeping, and the sweeping drags on into other projects. Also, by not having enough Public Works employees, we pay more overtime. Another example, if we don't pay the fees for the Microsoft license for the town, and we can find or take into court, it's going to cost a lot more than the software license. Public Works cannot function without an additional person. They have already explained that they can't find anyone to subcontract the plowing. I don't know the reasons we have recently lost two Public Works employees, but it has to be frustrating to not have enough manpower and not be supported by the town. Whenever someone's road isn't plowed fast enough, you can be sure that townspeople will be calling to complain because they want these services. If you keep expecting our Public Works employees to be stressed and overworked, then don't be surprised when there's turnover. My last point is that costs continually go up. By insisting on as close to 0% increase as possible, you are not considering the actual costs of goods and services. We all see our streaming services, groceries and gas prices increase. This is just a small sample of personal spending. Much of what the town purchases also increases, and we have not allowed these increases in several years. Please support our town and its employees by supporting reasonable budgets and actually consider the necessities of these increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next, present to speak. If you're in video, wave your hand, please, and I'll call on you. Michelle Cunningham, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Michelle Dusset Cunningham, 41 Lisker Road. I'd like to support everything that Lori Semperban just said and call specifically on the Board of Finance to think about what types of investments we can make that'll support recovery going forward. Because many of you who've worked in business know you have to spend money to make money. So for example, you have to put money in the budget to have a summer camp, but the summer camp recoups some of those costs in parent fees. It's not fully self-sustaining. It shouldn't be. You want to be able to offer scholarships to parents who cannot pay the full amount, but that's something that invests in the parents' capacity to go back to work. And if they aren't able to do so, that doesn't support our well-being in the community as a whole. So there are items in the budget that support recovery. I think that just cutting the budget to say that we're keeping our taxes lower than neighboring towns is not a smart approach. It's actually kind of a lazy person's approach of not really doing the research and looking at every single one of these particular requests for what they're worth. I think you need to look very closely. This year, due to the expertise in our school superintendent and the relationships we've made with some of the contractors, we were able to keep the increase very low this year, which will help balance off the increase from the Region 19 that could have been much worse. And because of that, I think we have to really think about what can we do to invest in our town? Some of that would be the library. That's another example of if you don't invest money, you can't make money. The fact that our library director salary is the lowest in the state is a shame. It should absolutely not be the case, and no wonder you can't have someone who wants to come and stay in a position like that if they're not supported by the town. So I think we have to be paying attention and look at each of these requests as they're in there and to think about what they do to bring recovery back to the town. Let's not go with only the most negative responses. Let's look at both sides, as Lori Semperban mentioned, that there are just as optimistic forecasts out there you can look at. And also, we've also been super conservative in the past and have been very careful with the taxpayers' money, and I don't think that's going to change just because you look at a budget and spend more money this year. What happens after a recession is that government helps to spend its way out of it. That's why there's been such an investment from the federal government. And it's not the time for local government to pull back too strongly. That does not help the situation. It will actually make things worse. So please consider this an investment going forward and go deeply into each of these lines and think about what we need because it really can make a big difference in the lives of the families that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if you're in video, please wave your hand. Peter Latincich.
Peter Latincich, 97, Trast Road. I want to express the viewpoint I've been sharing with the board over the past few meetings or perhaps year. I don't believe the economic depression, not recession, but depression that our town, our state and the nation finds itself in is either imaginary or exaggerated. And there's a fairly strong consensus among all of our state economic forecasters that not only are we in a deep recession, but that we haven't recovered from the last one, which this Board of Finance shared from Professor Carstens' report from the University of Connecticut. No one is suggesting there be any cuts. I haven't heard a single cut yet to our budget. I think what the townspeople are merely expressing is that there should not be increases in spending on the town level at a time when so many Wellington residents have lost their jobs or had their incomes reduced by furloughs or entire businesses closed or shuttered. I think what's especially frustrating about this is that much of this economic dislocation has been caused by government mandates. So it's very hard for townspeople or residents of our state to be told not only does government spending have to increase while your income or job is decreasing or being eliminated, but that this is all happening as a result of government mandates. So I strongly urge the Board of Finance not to cut. I agree with Lori and Michelle. No one's asking for cuts. We are simply suggesting that at a time when so many of our residents are feeling this kind of pain, that we not increase the budget. I think that's reasonable. I think that's what the Board of Finance said at the very beginning of its process when it asked for a net zero excluding, of course, whatever one understands as salary increases. No one in a private sector is getting an increase. We understand that the municipal increases are required and that those will happen. We're simply suggesting there not be an increase at a time like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Bullock, I saw your hand next.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I agree with Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. I agree with Mr. Latincich. We're not asking, many of the townsfolk are not asking for cutting of spending. They're asking for spending to be held flat or very reasonable. The CPI in our area is probably a touch under 3%. Anything over that is unreasonable. We have no growth in our brand list. Asking for double-digit increases is totally unreasonable and out of touch with the regular workers of our town. Nobody's getting large increases. Many people had furloughs or time cut, and I think we need to be sensitive to those townspeople, particularly those on fixed income who are in this situation. So I applaud the Board of Finance. They're doing a great job separating out needs from wants and from what I've seen so far, and I urge you to continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in video. Debbie, I see you from the library. You're muted still. There you go.
Thank you. Debbie Lanairs, co-directing right now at the library, also a taxpayer here in Wellington. I have two to give. I have my own, what I'd like to say, and then also our Chair of the Library Board asked me to say something as well. I understand this is a hard time for everybody, and it puts the library in a really difficult position because there is no way that we can go flat and for a number of reasons. And so please don't shoot the messenger. I need to do my job, and what I'm about to say is would enable me to do that and to give the people in town, the library, that they have so long waited for, fought for and have. I'm well aware of how the world is today, both as a family and at large, and no, we're not in a good place. So in one way, I kind of feel bad that I have to bring this to you like this, but again, I have to. I understand that there's a very substantial increase in this year's library budget, and it is one like our town has never seen from a library before. We've always, matter of fact, had a history of presenting budgets with little and little to no increases over the years because we were always trying to save the taxpayer money. I think we're very diligent in that, and it's because of that, and our budgets having been so low for so long and no one asking for more money for the library, that we're in the position that we're in, not to mention with state mandated things. Also, we need more money, but for a lot of reasons, we have always tried to been frugal. I want you guys to know that we remain so even now. I know the last few budgets, for a fact, were way under and way off. They weren't correct. So it makes it hard because it makes this year look even worse. And with increases that they did not just come out of the sky, they are things that had not been met over the last two, three years, and now they have to be addressed. And I don't know that we, how else we can meet what needs to be done because those needs weren't addressed for such a very long time. We're far behind on many things that we should have and should be able to offer the people in Wellington, and we're at a point now that we have to catch up. We're years behind in having a budget that works and meets all the library's needs and the capabilities for growth. So much has been neglected or overlooked for so long that now we feel we have no choice but to act, and it can't be put off any longer. What the budget, I know there's a big increase. I want you to know that we've worked very hard. It's a very good, sound and fair budget. And it's accurate for a change. That has been, which hasn't been the case, like I said, over the last few years. My concern is, I love my library. When I moved out to this town, this is all that we had, not this library. I've been here 34 years, but this is all Wellington had to give, and I kid you not, when I say my family used it minimum two, three times a day, a week rather, sometimes more. So I'm concerned, and I love this library. We are losing people to other libraries because we are not able to meet their needs, and we need to be more, and we can be more, but it's going to cost. We're saving now even as we are having to spend the money. Trust me when I tell you that that budget could have looked, and it should have, and would have looked worse. But we have been doing things to meet the needs that we have to, that we need to meet, but yet going forward, trying to save money wherever possible. The library, too, as of this year, is trying to be very transparent as far as what we're doing, where and how we're saving money. Again, we've been lacking in meeting important needs. We just don't want to have the library be less than what it once was, and we want it to be more than it is and all that. It can be. Unfortunately, like with everything, it's about the dollar, and it is going to take some money. I think the people are expecting more from their library, and I know they're entitled to it. And we've all worked so hard to make it what it is today. I just don't want to, I don't want to lose it. I just learned that, you know, we worked hard to bring you what, you know, was the most accurate and fairest of budgets. You might know that it is high more than anyone's ever seen, but we are here to serve the needs of every individual and our community, you know, better. So that's all that I wanted to share. If I could just share now what our Chair, Karen Anne Caldwell, asked me to read. She says, Dear members of the Board of Finance, when I presented the request for the library budget for the next fiscal year, I understand that the library asked for a very large increase in their budget. The hope was that this increase would allow the library to recover from the pandemic shutdown, hire people to bring staffing up to previous levels and cover some needed repairs to the building. At the meeting, it was brought up that when the library was built, it was the understanding that it would be self-sustaining. For the last month, members of the board and the library staff have done a deep dive into this. Nowhere in the history of the library does any of the paperwork indicate this. If the library were to become self-sustaining, it would, under the definition, no longer be a municipal library, but a private one. It does, however, show that the library board was expected to contribute $50,000 a year toward expenses from 2006 to 2009, and then in 2010, $56,000. That added to the town contribution, gave the library a total budget of $2,600. 10 to 2, $15,000 more than the current budget that the library has been running on the last five years. She does have a chart if anybody wants to see it that explains. The problem with this is that the library currently has no revenue beyond the late fees and the contributions of the friends of the library unless money is left to the library and a resident's will, for example. Looking into the past, most of these revenues were to come from rental fees for use of the library outside, by outside parties. Unfortunately, five or six years ago, the director at the time decided to cancel all rental fees, allowing any part of the library to be used for free by outside interests. That's not quite right. Okay. Effectively removing the revenue stream that the library was supposed to contribute. Okay, that's not entirely true. Just to let people know that where it changed was that if you were a Wellington resident, if you're a nonprofit, even if you're a nonprofit from out of the town, we weren't charging people.
Debbie, I'm sorry. This is Mike McCoo. I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're coming up on 10 minutes, and I know you're speaking for
Oh, my goodness, okay.
But if you could wrap up, that would help.
I will. I've got one more paragraph. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is expected that the increase in the budget would be granted to allow the library to get back on its feet, and when the shutdown is over, the hope is that people will return to face-to-face get-togethers and wish to use the library. At which point, the library could reintroduce rental fees and contribute to its own budget. It is uncertain how, after five or so years of no fees for use, reinstituting this cost will affect the use of the library by groups. But since the number of the places available for meetings is limited in Wellington, and people seem to be tiring of online meetings, the library board and the current directors are optimistic that we can return to a revenue stream that could contribute approximately 20% or more to our budget costs. Thank you, cordially Karen Anne Caldwell, current Chair, Wellington Public Library. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for that. Next, on present to speak. If you're in video, wave your hand, please. Maureen Parcell, go ahead. You're still muted.
All right, sorry about that.
There you go.
There. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Parks and Recreation Budget. Wellington Parks and Recreation provides an essential service to the town of Wellington and to all of its residents, youth, adults, seniors and families. Our Parks and Recreation Department stayed open during the COVID crisis, maintaining their facilities and continuing to offer programs while following all COVID guidelines. Despite COVID, however, they had an incredibly busy year, finding ways to safely hold their summer concert series, loaning out kayaks every weekend, holding yoga classes, science in the park, projects in the park and more. They offered a family scavenger hunt over Thanksgiving weekend and joined together with our surrounding communities and offered a tour of holiday lights at Christmas time. How did they do this with the closure of all of our town's facilities? They got creative. They thought outside of the box and turned our town's parks into outdoor classrooms. They held all their programs at River Road Athletic Complex and Cent and Ruby Park. They followed all guidelines and protocols and continued to run programs so that they could provide these essential services to our residents. And most importantly, they were able to keep our parks open for those seeking respite while also supporting the physical and mental health needs of our residents. They worked hard to maintain those spaces and to keep them safe and accessible to all. Mr. Tanaka stated last week that he believes that recreation is necessary, but doesn't believe that it falls into the word essential and that they were able to close. I don't agree with that statement. I believe that Parks and Recreation is essential. It is essential to the health and well-being of our community. It's what brings our community together, our youth, adults, seniors and families. Parks and Recreation is essential to the overall health of our community. It is the mission of the Parks and Recreation Department to always commit its resources to expand and adapt to the recreational needs of every resident in Wellington. Our parks are essential and recreation is essential. It is my hope that the Board of Finance will support the Parks and Recreation Department's budget request for fiscal year 2021-2022 so they can continue to meet the needs of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others in video, wave your hand. I see someone whose name is showing up as Bill Foreman.
Everything in the world is in his name and nothing's in mine. I'm Joan Tarasgus, and I did want to speak to the budget here a minute. I'm very physically, I'm very conservative for the most part. And when I am on the library board, and when we went in to do the budget, it was my attitude that we shouldn't increase the budget. And then I heard what was going on, and we all, everybody in town deserves a slap on the wrist on this one. We have not paid attention to what's going on for years. Absolutely, nobody's really, really done the nitty-gritty, and I don't really know how you would. You know, I don't know that any one individual could have done it, but we all, we all were complicit in this. And so now, this last year, we've had Debbie and Hope as the co-directors, and they have done a phenomenal job going through all of the paperwork, the finances, the program, nothing that was very tightly controlled by a director. And that's where really, that's really where the rub lies, is in the director. And when we got to the budget, I saw what they said about every single item, and everything was thoroughly discussed. And what it really amounts to is it has been underfunded, and it's kind of like an old house. When you don't do the work, pretty soon things just fall apart and you end up spending twice as much as you wanted to to repair it. And that's exactly what we're going through. There were problems with the propane tank, and that had to be repaired. The elevator was not maintained, and we almost got closed down, or got the elevator closed down because it wasn't maintained. We've had problems with windows that need to be readjusted and doors that are leaking and all these things that happen when the maintenance isn't done well. And so we've seen a tremendous turnaround this year in attitude and tremendous turnaround in the facilities. And so although the increase in the budget shocked me at first, and I sat down and went through the notes, I realized sometimes it just costs to do business. And if you don't take care of it, as it happens, you're going to have to belly up to the bar sometime and just pay it. So unfortunately, You're going to have to belly up to the bar sometime and just pay it. So unfortunately, I need to support this big budget. And I would like to speak to the Parks and Rec. It has been shown and time and time again. That it is exercise and it is outdoor activities that really cause better brain growth. And grown brain maturation in all ages, even us elderly folks. So I think that they they really deserve whatever they can get. And I'm very, very proud of Wellington supporting this in the past. I brag to a lot of people about it. So thank you very much and I appreciate all the comments today.
Thank you. Next, I'm present to speak. If you're in video, wave your hand. I believe we've got everyone in video. So those of you who are not providing video, if you're only audio, mute and call out your name. If you want to speak and present to speak.
Yes, hi, this is Brenda Abrams, sixty three Schofield Road. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Brenda.
Hi. So, yeah, as a recreation therapist, of course, I'm all about recreation therapy and people getting out and doing things. And but I just, I I just feel like right now in the pandemic, we we really need to do responsible spending. I need, I think that we need to be, you know, really careful of where we put our money. There's a lot of people that are on unemployment in in the town. There's a lot of people with businesses that aren't doing well. So I just, I'm I'm for. I'm definitely for recreation. I'm definitely for responsible spending. So especially at this time with the pandemic. I I feel like with. With like the elevator, I I just feel like things have not been taken care of through the years. And now we're stuck with all this big spending because things weren't done. You know, when they should have been done. So. You know. I'm I'm for responsible spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who is not in video who would like to unmute, call out your name for present to speak? Okay, I don't believe we have anyone else for presence to speak. Let's move on to new business budget appropriations items tabled at the March eighteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. I will, I'll open some discussion on the board. I think every, pretty much every concern I've heard voiced from every board member through this budget process and. Every towns person in present to speak, some part of it rings true for me. I think that's what's very challenging about the job we're doing here. And so I try to put as much thought into it before we get to the meetings. And I also try to figure out really where we are because this is a unique time. There are definitely some, there are definitely things that are challenging for this time financially. If there ever was a time that was a rainy day, we certainly have had rainy days. We've had some discussion about would the university, would we have a large impact because the university changing its mode of teaching? Everything that I've participated in indicates the university wants to get back to as much in person. Education as would allow them to reopen the dorms fully. And that's a critical financial piece for the university is to have the dorms and the dining halls running. There's more more profit margin, I guess you would say, in those areas than in the education tuition and stuff. So I think certainly from the meetings I've been involved with and what I've heard from people, I think they're heading in that direction. How fast they'll get there, I don't know. Certainly, the the campus is, you know, at at a moderated capacity right now. Real estate's still strong. Local contractors I've talked to are busy. Partly because people have stayed home and wanted to do work on their properties. Partly because it's spring and there's pent up demand. Vacation demand, which doesn't affect Wellington very much. I don't know of many people who come to vacation in Wellington. But I think it's an economic indicator, at least for a certain slice of our population. Places that I vacation, a lot of them are full already. And campgrounds are filling and we do have two campgrounds in Wellington. And though they are employers as well as taxpayers. And another thing that I found was unusual is daycare demand is very high. It's been going up every month. A daycare that I'm connected to is at the highest enrollment in two years, so well pre pandemic. So I'm hoping some of the negatives that we know are happening are also balanced by all these positives. So I guess balance is my key word. How we're going to find, hopefully, over the course of this evening, we're going to find the right balance to get us moved on and keep this town operating. And keep the impact on the taxpayers reasonable, but also keep the impact on our services reasonable. I don't know exactly what that means in numbers, but I'll be honest, I think that. I feel like there's going to end up being somewhat of a small increase in taxes and I know some people are very much against that. I appreciate that, but I think that everything else I pay for is going up. And the last thing I want is another thing to go up, but it's also reality. Things are getting more expensive. And I expect that I'm going to pay a little more in taxes myself. Because we have to keep this. We have to keep this thing operating. So that's my thirty five cents worth. Other board comments, discussion? Shall we get to our specific areas? The items. All right, taking them in order. I believe, hang on, a lot of papers here. I believe the first one that was left not addressed that was tabled from Thursday night is Department zero five one two Recreation Commission. So to get things started. I moved to accept the request for zero five one two Recreation Commission for eighty three thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars. Can I get a second? All right, no second, so I guess that motion fails.
I'm sorry, which, are you working off the? So we're not going back yet or we are going back?
Well, I went back to the first one unless I mixed up the order of my papers. The first, when in the order we did things the other night. The first one that was not settled that got tabled was zero five one two Recreation Commission. Marissa and Donna are nodding yes. I figured that's a good sign.
No, you're right. That's where we are.
And then the number that you read, I that's, I wasn't sure what that was.
That was the original request. I'm just trying to get discussion.
All right, can I second that then?
Of course.
I didn't second it because I wasn't sure what it was. Sorry.
Okay, so I made the motion based on the original requested amount, so let's have some discussion.
Mike, can you remind us what what percentage increase that is?
Hang on, that's a different sheet. Standby.
I don't have it.
That is a fourteen thousand dollar increase for twenty one percent.
And just as a refresher, that's mostly because. Human Services has cut the its portion of the summer camp. Cost out of their budget. So Parks and Rec has had to pick it up. That's a lot, large part of it, right?
I think it's mostly field maintenance, increased to field maintenance, correct, Bethany?
It was a large part of the budget that the town supports is. The rec director wages, the assistant rec director wages, payroll taxes. And our field contracts for town office building. For the school and for River Road. So those are all contracted items that we can't decrease. We need to support those items.
Bethany, what part of the school is rec responsible for?
The fields.
So all of the mowing at the schools or just the ball fields?
The the sports fields, the athletic fields.
Okay, Phil, can you help clarify?
Yeah, so it's the Phil Stevens superintendent. So it's any of the field space like at Hall School, the the lower soccer field, the baseball soccer for softball soccer field. The remainder of the facility around the facility is is through our budget. There's. And I'm, I believe I pay for everything for Center School.
Okay. Thank you both for that.
Can you make a comment? Joe from.
Go ahead, Joe.
Joe Colangelo, Jared Sparks Road, I'm the Chair of the Rec Commission. Really, the basic cost increase here is field maintenance. Anyone who's been at River Road and stood on the soccer field, they noticed that that field's coming apart. So it needs some topsoil, it needs some care. And we we have to take care of it or we're going to lose it. Field gets used a lot. River Road is hopefully going to get used a lot this summer. There's a lighting project going on. Bethany's going to be really busy and she's probably going to need quite a bit of help to maintain that. We're trying to do what everyone has said here, keep people busy during a pandemic, which I hope is almost over. But this budget increase is not for anything but necessities. And I know not everything is looked at here by some people as a necessity. But all the town budget really pays for is the taxes for payroll, our payroll and field maintenance. And there's really none of those things that can be taken away. And and again, a lot of what happens with this department is money raised from programs. Which Bethany is going to be extremely busy trying to work in during a pandemic. So we're not asking for bells and whistles. We're asking for maintenance.
Thank you for that, Joe. Board discussion?
Mike?
Yes.
It was mentioned earlier that I I had pointed out that that I didn't put this into the. The. Process of of essential services. I just want. Maureen and and the rest of their committee to know that. My definition of essential services working in public safety is extremely high. And while I understand that the. Need for towns to come together and recreate. If if that doesn't happen, we don't have. A collapse of civilization. And I think that this is a rather high budget request. I I hear that most of it is based on fields, but I, at the last meeting, I was told. A lot of it's because of the summer camp, so I'm I'm not sure where to go on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, well, I don't, I want to limit. If we're going to go to people off the board, it really has to be to answer a specific question. We can't have back and forth conversation. Really, you know, we have to have. We've got to maintain some flow to this. If there's something technically incorrect, I'll certainly. You know, feel free to offer something that we're technically incorrect about. But we can't have discussion, really.
Yeah, I think just as far as the summer camp thing, last time it was. Not. Summer camp supports itself, so our budget, you know, all of our programs are self sustaining. Our budget is those contracted items, like I said, that we can't negotiate price on, so.
Okay, so you're showing an increase in your cost to run the summer camp, but you're also showing an increase in revenue to cover it. Because sharing the revenue back. With the other department because you're also not sharing the salary with the other department.
Correct.
Okay.
Mike, I was wrong about the field too. They do, they wreck most the the little league baseball field. But we wrote mo around Center School, the remainder of the school. Okay, so basically any recreation field space, they they mow.
Got it. Other board members, discussion, Stephanie?
Yeah, thanks for that clarification from Bethany and Phil, because that that helped me understand this. I just want to make a point about essential and and public safety versus Parks and Rec. I feel like in the life of a community. I guess I always feel like Parks and Rec and some of the services the town offers on that side of the ledger. Are, if you will, preventative for other things that are, you know, that put people at risk. And that fall more into the extreme measures of public safety. I I honestly feel like the more, especially on the heels of this pandemic. The more community people can get out into safe places. Exercising and participating in town life. That is actually a preventative for other things to happen that are rough on their lives and the lives of a in a community. So I feel like it's, I I'm more coming down on the side of it's being an essential.
The board, Christina?
I agree with what Steph just said, and also. I mean, we approved the budget for the increase of the transfer station, which is basically the same sort of thing. It was all contractual increases. That made a function more expensive this year. That's that's all that this is. And I don't, I don't see how we can cut it. I don't see what what would give it. We're not going to stop mowing the field at Center School. Unless unless we are, but I don't think anybody wants that. And I don't think it's it's on our, the six of us to decide that that's what we're going to do. So I think we should let it go to the townspeople, let them decide.
This is Brenda. I was just wondering, how much is the actual increase going to be?
Hang on, I'll read it again.
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
Yeah, fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty one dollars. Twenty one percent.
I would have to say I'm in in agreement with Pete Tanaka.
Lisa, I see your hand raised.
Hi, I just wanted to point out that. As a alternate and as a taxpayer. You know, I am tired of going to the next door neighbor communities to find the services that I wish to participate in. You know, I've been a taxpayer in town for twenty five years and, you know. So I I'm, you know, I'm clear that it's been a pandemic. I've lived right smack in the middle of it, day in and day out. And like my team of people that have been in this pandemic, day in and day out as healthcare workers. Some live here, some don't. They want to enjoy themselves and go back out and enjoy their services. So my point is that there are two sides of this point, and I hope that the Board of Finance tonight with their voting power really works to. Represent the entire town. Thanks.
Thank you. More discussion? All right, Marissa, why don't you call a vote?
Jeff?
Why do I have to be first? You know, I'm a person that uses literally zero town services, but other people do. And, you know, for the sake of not having to. Correlate this anymore of, oh, yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt? Christina?
Yes.
Pete?
Pete?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Four yes, two no.
Okay. Uh, next, in order, I move to accept the budget request for zero five one seven library for two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Any seconds on that?
That didn't sound like a right dollar amount. I'm sorry, I, I wasn't listening as close as I could have, but. What'd you say?
I believe I read two eighty-two, two forty-six.
All right, that's what, that's what I have. I, I just heard the two forty-six and I thought that was a little low.
Second, Mike.
Okay, motion of second discussion on this?
Mike?
Yes.
I, I just, I, I understand that the library, I, I understand that it's central to, to the town. I just think that forty-nine and a half percent may be a big bite to chew on, on this. I, I would suggest a, a lower amount. I'd like to see a step forward. Uh, so I don't, I don't want it to be zero, but I want it to be enough so that they can step forward, at least on, for instance, their internet. I'd like to see an improvement before I, I, I make a bigger bite. Thank you.
The board members discussion? Matt?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate on that, forty-nine percent increase is too high. Now, I looked at, you know, the budget pretty carefully on the library. And we have, we're now contemplating paying eighty thousand dollars a year, a little over eighty thousand dollars a year, for two co-directors, replacing one director, who admittedly needed to be replaced, but, and essentially doubling the, the cost of that. So I'm with Peter, I think that what we should do is some kind of small increase to get the library headed in the right direction. And then see where that goes before committing to a, essentially a fifty percent increase in their budget.
Um, I know, not, not to be picky, but just for the sake of accuracy, the sheet I have shows a forty-eight point two percent increase. I believe Donna, do I have the right number? Ninety-one thousand eight ten? Yes, okay, thank you. I gotta be honest, I think there, I find a lot to support with the library. And I think they've made a good pitch on what's been left unattended to and how it needs to get fixed. I just am not sure how to justify supporting a nearly fifty percent increase. I think they need it, but I just don't know how we can ask the taxpayers. If our job is to make prudent decisions about taxpayer dollars, I'm just not sure I can face a, a nearly fifty percent increase. Stephanie?
I just wanted to ask a question. I don't know if it's okay to ask Deb since she's here or, but the two directors issue, is that, are, you know, because you also said that you're not staffed at, at full staff right now, which makes sense during, during the pandemic, but when you reopen and you wanna add more people, is, is there, you know, the, the two positions, or Deb, I guess the one that you were in before, is that still on staff to be filled? Or is that, are those two director positions coming from the second-in-command position and being absorbed?
You're still muted, Debbie.
Sorry about that. Kind of both. There, there are a couple of different scenarios that we could work out. The work that has needed to be done as far as the directorship really shouldn't fall on one person. It is a lot of work. We have found that it's taken two people to do it and do it right. But we have dealt with many things from the past, we're keeping up with the present, and we've actually done a lot of good things as far as the future of the library already. We, we have six people now, we've had as many as nine people. If it were to come to doing co-directing, we were hoping that as things kind of settle down a little bit, the two people who do the co-directing would be able to also take care of the programmer job. Personally, I don't wanna lose it. Firstly, I wanna go back to being at the front desk. I love my people, I miss them. That's a great, great job. But we're, we're, we're trying to think of how we can still, what we really need and how we can get away with, like the six people that are here right now, Stephanie, are doing many other jobs. So we were going to take back and give them only what was theirs and then hire new people to take on what is missing. As far as the programming job, that's something that we were thinking and hoping that between the two co-directors, we could absorb that, that person, kind of thing. Did I make, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, let's do a vote.
Okay, so we're voting on the original request of two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-six. Christina?
No.
Pete?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Matt?
No.
Mike?
No. I'll offer an alternative. I was thinking of a number of, say, two forty-two, two forty-six, which would be a forty thousand dollar reduction in the request, giving them a increase of fifty-one eight-ten instead of ninety-one eight-ten. Very, I didn't make that a motion yet. I figured I would get some discussion going.
Can you say it again, Mike?
Uh, the total amount was two forty-two, two forty-six. So it was a, it was a reduction in the request of forty thousand dollars, essentially cutting the request almost in half.
So you're looking at a twenty-five percent increase?
Uh, I didn't do that math yet.
Second, if you didn't get a second.
I didn't make it a motion, I just, discussion.
Oh, you wanted to discuss it?
I'm just seeing what the appetite is.
Okay.
Opposed to having multiple failed motions, maybe there's a, maybe there's a direction we can get going here.
I'm just hesitant to just pick a random number out of the air when we don't really know what that means.
Yeah.
I, I, I know that we asked at the time when the budget was presented, what would have, what, what another scenario might be? And I don't recall what the answer was, but.
Well, we did, in the budget guidance letter, we said, we'd like you to submit a zero percent and, and explain to us the things that can't be at zero percent or why you can't be. And I, I'm not using, repeating the exact same language, but was the gist of it. The things that can't be zero help us understand why. And so that, that was basically the point we made in the guidance letter.
I have to concur with Christina. I feel that we should maybe even table this item for another, another meeting.
I don't think we can do that.
We're running out of time for meetings. This is, this is our responsibility. We have to, we have to get through this. If there's some incredibly compelling reason that we can't tonight, I'll consider that. But this is our responsibility, and we've had weeks of being, of board members being reminded, if you have questions, concerns, get them to me so I can get them to those budget requesting departments so we can learn more. We wanna make good decisions, but we've had this, we've had this budget in our hand. I don't remember what day, I can't see my budget calendar from here, but we've had the library's request in hand since sometime in February. Mike?
I, I just, I think that, you know, because we asked, I asked at the last meeting, if the library could come back with what an incremental step forward would look like. And, and you're right, Christina, I don't, I don't see that being presented tonight. Only because it's just such a huge number, ninety-one grand in, in our budget anywhere is a huge number. And I'm feeling like I'd like to do something that's aggressively moves the library in the right direction. But I don't think that we can do that whole nut. So what is it that, you know, that could be done? I know the library's hesitant to use its other funds, except for earmarked reasons. For instance, there's a lot of IT in the budget. I'm wondering if, you know, computer kind of programs where you're adding, if you're adding equipment or you're doing some software upgrades or whatever, if that could come out of those other donated funds that you, that the library has, something to relieve the pressure on their budget as presented. That's my thought. So where we might not have an educated way to address this other than to say, we can go this far in one year based on what you've presented. I don't, I, I think we're stuck, because I do think we need to act tonight.
Mike?
Yes, Pete?
I, I'd like to see something in, in the vicinity of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I believe that's a two percent increase plus the cost of the internet upgrade. Roughly. I'm, I'm, I'm not doing the math real quick here, and I apologize for that. But I figure about, they asked for about two hundred thousand dollars yet last year. That's a twenty thousand dollars, is it, is it? Uh, no, that would be uh, four thousand dollars would be the, the increase of two percent. And then I think the internet increase was six thousand dollars. So we added about eight or, let's just round it off to ten thousand dollars on top of what they had before. So that would be two hundred and ninety, uh, two hundred and four thousand dollars. That's a two percent increase to account for payroll, et cetera. I, I I also don't know, does the library have to jump some of their payroll due to the state minimum wage?
Yes, they do.
All right, so it would be more than that, and I apologize for that. I, I don't know how to do the fast math on that, and I apologize for that.
Pete, what was the total number again? You were?
The total number I was, I, I suggested was, uh, let's see, two hundred and four thousand six thirty-six. But that was, that was just a rough math, and I, I apologize for not having the payroll correct in that. So I would, I would probably add some to that for payroll. But I, I'd like to see the internet at least caught up for the last fifteen or twenty years, whatever they said that they hadn't done on that. Make that a first step. We, I'd like to see some of the, like Debbie told us, there's been a lot of errors and, and failure to upkeep for the last fifteen years. I, I'd like to see an improvement before we make the big jump. That's, you know, I, I know that's asking a lot.
Okay, Christina?
Um, I was just gonna say, I, I agree with what Peter's saying. I think we need to make some investments. And I, I know that we haven't upkept things for the last fifteen years, and not just in the library, everywhere. This is what happens every single year, pretty much across the board. And, and it's just that this year, the crisis point is at the library. And I, I don't have advice. I don't know how to fix it. And I, but I don't think putting all this money towards it in this one year is the answer. I think a phased approach would be good to hear, that like, a, a little bit more than one year, maybe two or three years, this is what we're gonna do year one, this is what we're gonna do year two. I think that would make it easier to understand and more palatable to the taxpayers and maybe force everyone to, to start thinking beyond just one year and getting to the next year.
This is Brenda. I'd like to ask Donna, what is the actual increase that the library is asking for?
Brenda, I've read, uh, hang on. Yeah, let me read this again from the sheet. It's forty-eight point two percent, and it is ninety-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollar increase.
Whoa, okay. Oh, wow.
So the budget in the current fiscal year is one nine zero four three six. The requested is two eight two two four six.
Wow, that, that is a drastic increase. Wow.
Lisa, oh, sorry, Brenda, were you, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, Lisa?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, like, in the proposal, I heard Debbie, I heard you talk about, so I know a little bit of the history, and then I heard what you said and your proposal a couple of weeks ago and tonight. And it seems like, so like, the library was built for us in town, which was a great gift. And, and then it was just sort of like, it was sort of like left, just as eloquently said by one of our town members tonight, I can't remember. And I guess what I'm saying, what I'm trying to get out is, is there a kind of a plan? Like, do you, you know how like the town has a capital improvement plan, right? So like, what is the plan for the facility for the library? You know, instead of just a Band-Aid approach, like getting through all the fissures? And so, I mean, that's my two cents. I, I don't, I don't really, I mean, I, I don't have anything more to say, but that throwing money at it, like what Christine was saying and Peter Tanaka was saying, you know, it does seem like a Band-Aid approach. It seems just like, without a plan. It doesn't have, you know, you have, you have programs that you wanna offer the town, which are terrific. And, and the municipal, the municipality of the library is so essential and important, important, I feel, for every towns member. But the facilities portion of that building, like if you don't have the building, you can't offer any of the structure, I mean, the, the program. So, and I didn't really hear that, like during the season. I heard that there were, um, the, the elevator and, and the, you know, certain parts of the facility that were a problem, but it didn't seem like there was a real plan on how to sustain the structure. So that's all I have to say.
Hang on just a second, Debbie. I do, I do wanna give you a chance to comment quickly on that, but I do wanna call the board members' attention to the fact that we did have materials submitted with the, there's a letter that was dated February fourth, two pages long, that did explain some of this that came with the budget request. And then there was some follow-up after that meeting. Deb sent some information to me by email after that meeting, which I did send to the board members. So there is, there is some material that has been sent to us that we had the opportunity to review since February, which does not answer everything that Lisa said, but does explain a lot of this. So I think there's at least some effort to share that. Debbie, if you wanna give us a quick, anything I missed?
I, it has been a Band-Aid kind of situation for as long as I can remember, and that's what we're trying to resolve as far as do we have a plan in place. Unfortunately not, we haven't done that. Should we be doing it or will we get to do it? Yes, that certainly should be the way. Let's see, I, I, I have a couple of things. We, my concern is, let us try to see what we can do to bring down the budget. The only reason I'm saying, and that could tell, there's no way that it can be only two percent. And I'm gonna be lucky if we can get it to twenty-five. First, again, there are things you just can't budge on. Let me try. I know just as of the last few weeks and since we had in, on February fourth, our budget meeting, Hope and I have been working really hard on still trying to save money. For example, the elevator, we have to meet state standards and we didn't. And thank goodness, nobody found out because we could have gotten fined. And thank goodness, nobody found out, because we could have gotten fined, and that would have been a nightmare. And we, we just, as of last week, even though our contract with Otis Elevator, for example, is not up as of yet, we initiated a new one, because the work that has to be done on the elevator, which we cannot get away with doing, is, it was gonna cost us ten thousand dollars. But if we haven't done this year, they actually gave us three thousand off. So that, that we know, we just talked about, being taken off, a good amount of that can be taken off of the building maintenance now, because we found a way to, and we do have the money in the building maintenance for this year. So we're, we're working on stuff. When that was all presented in February fourth, we racked our brains and we did the best I'm scared we could do. But we're still working at, because we knew, you know, heart of hearts, that this was not gonna fly. But, so, and I didn't know we had time until, before this meeting, to actually try to make adjustments. I thought it was gonna be after this meeting, that that's when we would do it. But we've been doing it anyway, so we'll continue to do it.
All right. Debbie?
Question?
Debbie, I think that's a good enough answer for now. I'd like to keep us moving. Thank you. Okay, we don't have a motion currently. The number that I had presented before was the two-fourty-two-two-forty-six, which would have been a twenty-seven percent increase over the current year. Just, I did the rest of the math. Does anyone have a motion with a number in mind? Matt?
I'll follow on Peter's comment earlier. I'll make a motion to move forward with the, let's see, two-hundred-and-four thousand, is it two-hundred-and-four? Peter, what was your number?
That was my, my number was two-hundred-and-four-six-thirty-six.
Two-hundred-and-four-six-thirty-six, moving forward.
I'll second Matt's motion, seeing as how I came up with the number.
So that's a fourteen thousand dollar increase over the current fiscal year, correct? Am I, yes?
Yes, fourteen thousand two hundred dollar increase.
What's that in percentage terms, Donna?
Come, coming up with a ten percent?
Ten percent increase, and that's, to be quite honest, much, much higher than.
Uh, yeah.
I don't think that's ten percent. If they're, no, I think that's quite a bit below ten percent. Ten percent would be about two-hundred-and-ten thousand.
Ten percent, nineteen thousand dollar increase. That's easy math there, because it's one right now. So this is like a seven or something.
Seven point four-five.
There we go. Okay, any more discussion on that motion? I'll throw in my two cents worth. I like the math, but I think it's too drastic. I think it would, I think it would hamper the library too much at that number. That's my, that's my feeling. Any other board discussion? Christina?
I'm not sure if it would hamper them. I just don't feel like I understand enough about what, what would happen. So if we were to pass this now and get three or four months down the line, and they came back to us, would we be able to do an additional appropriation if we had the funds and it made sense at that time? As like a compromise?
We always, we always have that option. I think that, that tool has been used in the past, usually more on the capital side. But that tool has been used in the past as a way to complete a budget and give not only the board, but also the taxpayers and the agency that's requesting the funds, the opportunity to take new look at things. The challenge, of course, is whether there'll be money in the future, or whether there'll be an appetite to approve it. You know, which is a board thing, and then gets moved on to the taxpayers if you do an appropriation outside of the normal budget cycle. Well, it's approved by the taxpayers regardless. But if you're adding new money to a budget, then outside of some of the transfers we're allowed to do, it pretty much, it goes to the townspeople no matter what. So if, if the library came back to us later on and said, here's what we've done with the money you gave us, here's what we need to keep on going, or here's why we need more, then we would follow the process we've done in other meetings and ask the Board of Selectmen to call a meeting, a town meeting, to vote on a, you know, an appropriation outside of the budget cycle.
So this is Brenda, I agree with Pete and Matt.
All right, any other board discussion? All right, Marissa, let's vote.
Okay, the vote is on the number two-hundred-and-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six. Pete?
Yes.
Christina?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Three yes, three no?
I move that we fund Department zero-five-one-seven Library for two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
That's your happy medium?
That's, that's my shot at something that I feel like is, helps with the math with the taxpayers, but also hopefully allows the library to function at some.
Can I request a percentage on that?
Eighteen, I think. Is that right, Donna?
I'll check in that.
Eighteens, right, Donna?
I, I will go with that, yes.
Mike, did you make that motion? We were waiting for a second, is that it?
We have a motion in a second.
That's thirty-four.
Donna's doing more careful work than I did, so we'll see if my number's right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I, but you and Stephanie both have eighteen, so I, I feel good about eighteen.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. Matt?
I feel eighteen is a little high, and I'll be making a motion in between after this, if it doesn't pass, in between where we were before and where we are now.
Yeah, Mike, I, I thought I showed some consideration for how I got to my number, and I was wondering how you got to your number, other than adding something. I, I didn't know where you came up with your number, so I'm asking.
So, yeah, so basically, I looked at, because you had come up with your number, you had specified a couple of items that you covered. My feeling was that another ten thousand dollars gave a little bit of wiggle room for supporting some of the stuff that was in that two-page letter. The extra hours to attempt to get some of the management under control that has been neglected over the last few years and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more discussion on the motion?
I, I just would agree with Mike, that getting the management under control is the key to not having these major budget increases. It, it's the key to getting it stabilized, so I would be in favor of that.
Any more discussion? All right, let's vote.
Matt?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pete?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Four yes, two no?
Okay. All right, next in order is, I think is Department zero-one-eight-one Town Office Operations, am I right?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. For, to start discussion, I move to accept the budget request for zero-one-eight-one Town Office Operations for the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand and eighty-two dollars. Can I get a second to that motion?
Mike, what is the percentage increase on that?
Hang on.
Seventeen point four.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
There's, there's no personnel costs or insurance costs or anything in this. This is all just like office supplies and equipment and cleaning, correct?
Erica, could you just give the quick hit on what the major areas are in this?
Sure, it is, yes, Pete, that is correct. There's no, there's no staffing here. So the maintenance, our computer and IT services are in here, various computer programs. Fuel, heating fuel is in here. Postage for the town office building, and after the information that came out today, I'm nervous that we may be looking at a significant postage increase with some of the changes proposed at USPS. So we, we accounted for the increase, we know. I don't know about the increase, we don't know about yet. But the biggest driver here was the Microsoft Office project.
And I think you had a big decrease in, uh, fuel, heating fuel, right?
We did. We, we were able to secure, between Donna and Phil and myself, last spring, we were able to secure a considerably lower rate from about two-fifteen to one-sixty-three, one-sixty-four, depending on whether it was heating or diesel fuel.
Erica, the increase is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. How much was that Microsoft licensing?
It's about a thirty-eight thousand dollar project.
Okay.
So there were some significant decreases across the board in this department, and then this one, one-time large increase. There will be costs for licensing moving forward, but this one-time project cost, we will not see next year. We should see a decrease.
Sorry, I apologize. Can you repeat that? So we will see a decrease, or?
We should see a decrease next year. The licensing won't be another thirty-eight thousand dollars. We'll look, we'll be looking at an average licensing cost, an annual licensing cost, but not, the bulk of this is work that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That background noise is not me, I wanted them to know that.
Yeah, I'm just checking the mute, too.
So being, being pretty much a computer software background, I mean, if we're running, I think you said we're running it without licensing, or we're running outside of the norm, let's put it that way. So that's something that, that's very important.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, look, if we could get away without having to pay for it, that'd be one thing, but we know it's not right, and we need to do it, we need to do it right. And we have a very competent IT service now, that, that I don't have any doubts can handle this and get us through.
How long have we locked into that IT service? Is that a yearly contract, or?
Yes. They've been invaluable. Like, I can't, I'm not sure Phil and I could go on and on about the things that they've caught and been able to handle just in the past year.
Have we, have they sort of helped us with security?
Oh, yeah.
Security, I thought they had.
Absolutely.
They caught, they caught an attack, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
That alone.
That, yes, that is correct.
Okay, board discussion. All right, let's vote.
Okay, this is for the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars. Jeff?
I still hate Bill Gates, but yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Pete?
Also hating Bill Gates, I mean, yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, without stipulation.
Mike?
Standing that some people have to be rich, and it's not us, yeah.
All right, that's six yes.
Before we go any further, Donna?
Yes.
Actually, we work with the magic sheet a little more during this process, so we see what our final numbers are coming out to.
Yes.
Would you be, do you have it up to date right now with what we have agreed, what we have voted on so far?
Yes.
All right, would you be willing to do a screen share and show us what we're looking like right now? Yep, I have my own calculating device, but I have not been able to keep up with it during this discussion, because I'm taking, managing too many slices of paper.
Okay.
A screen share capability, do I need to help you out with that?
I don't think it's enabled.
Okay, let's see if, okay, try that.
That's good.
Oh, good.
Okay, so we left off with Public Works. We have two reductions so far. One in fire protection for nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, and one in the library for fifty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. So total expenditures so far for the general government have been reduced by sixty-six thousand five hundred and six dollars.
All right.
Well, but that's not, that's not reduced, that's, that's a reduction in the request.
Yes.
Yes, a reduction in the request.
Okay, Donna, I just, I'm.
Can you use a slightly larger font? I'm working off a laptop, and there's just, I, I can see that maybe there's numbers there.
Um, okay.
Donna, at the bottom right-hand of your screen in the green bar, there's a slider. I don't know if that'll help.
Ah, yeah, I can't, there we go. Slightly less, I think, and we'll be able to see the whole thing. Excellent. Oh, that's awesome.
So, Donna, hang on, I'm moving. I just want to see if, are you calculating mill rate currently in this? Is it running? Because I, thirty-one seventy-six, that's the same.
Yes, thirty-one seventy-six, good, we agree, okay.
That is the same number that my spreadsheet is telling me, which, just for reference, for a house, being taxed at a $200,000 value is a $354 increase. Assuming all my math is holding up.
Mike, that also assumes that all the budget moving forward is approved at the level requested, right?
Well, that assumes that the ones correct, that we have not yet addressed, were approved at the requested level. You are correct. That's our, so far, here's where we are.
And how, how much of a transfer from the general fund? Is it 400?
Four, right, 420 or something? 400,020 or something?
Yeah, that's right.
Or 400,230, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And so you, that happens when you try to go off a faulty memory. And that would leave us at, the fund would be at like 11.9 something, right?
Yes.
Basically at 12.
Basically at 12%.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Donna, for the sake of discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to look at, we have a lot of debate about the fund balance.
Yes.
I'd like to look at, maybe getting the fund balance closer to the middle of the eight to 12, so maybe in the 10s, the 10% range. Could you try applying, instead of the 400,230?
Yes.
700,230?
Point of order?
Uh, hang on a second, Matt. I have to change screens here. Yes?
Isn't this discussion something, I don't know, but isn't this discussion usually happen at the end after we've approved all of our appropriations, all of our votes?
So are you, are you claiming that I'm following, I'm making some sort of procedural?
No, no, I'm not claiming.
And it's not a point of order? You just have a question, right?
It's not a question.
Okay, because we've used point of order like five times in the last three meetings, and I want to make sure we use point of order if we're making a procedural error, not discussion. This is, at, at this point, anywhere in these appropriation meetings, we start moving these numbers around to see what the results are. Because we have to, it, if we were to make, vote on all of the cuts or, or funding each department all the way to the end and approve them all, and then suddenly discovered that we left the tax rate higher than we had an appetite for, or cut it lower than we had an appetite for, we would essentially have made all the motions already. So it is certainly within the norm of what we've done before to start looking at the final total. We don't have a lot of departments left to change. So we should see, you know, what the result is being. Right now, we're looking at a 300 and some dollar a year increase as we talked about a couple of minutes ago, and, and we have to look at what are the ways we're going to balance that. I'm making a motion to apply that amount of money. I'm just seeing what the numbers do.
And, and that's about a 1.1, 1.1 mill increase?
After that application.
Yes.
Okay, Pete?
I, I think I'd feel more comfortable discussing budgets without discussing where like, at the beginning of this, we were, we were discussing making sure that budgets were appropriated accordingly, not where we end up. So I'd like to leave our, our first guess at our how much we're using from the, the balance, fund balance to the end. I, I think that we, we can discuss budgets without that and then, then adjust at the end, but that's.
We're not discussing budgets, we're approving them. We're approving requests. We've approved most of them already.
Yeah, this is Brenda. I'm not sure if this is a spending discussion issue at this point right now.
I, I think that I think we're approving budgets as they've been presented to us. The overall budget is dependent on how much we use from that fund balance. And I, I think that if we start spending money from the fund balance, start approving, looking at more spending from the fund balance now, it may affect our decisions on how we look at budgets.
Uh, yes, that is, I think that's what we're, that's what we've done in past years. We've looked at where, where would the fund balance? Because if we don't have enough, just say we don't have enough in the fund balance to bring a certain
I, I. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, I just, I just, I'm just looking at it from the opposite angle. That's all.
Yeah, I just.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying that I, I'm, I'm, I'm approaching it from a different angle and I.
Right. I'm just concerned that we get through approving each of these departments and we're done with them, and then we look at what the number is and we say, wow, we still have a, I don't know, for example, two mill increase or whatever it is. I'm just making up numbers. And then all of a sudden, we say, whoa, that isn't where we intended up being. Can we use fund balance? Oh, there isn't enough fund balance. So, you know, I, that's, I guess it's just sort of that revolving conversation, right? We usually do this.
Yeah, I think, this is Brenda.
Hang on a second, Brenda. I've got people raising ahead of you. Stephanie?
Steph Summers, I just, I'm, I'm agreeing with what you're, what you're saying here. It's kind of like when you're, when you're trying to cut your own budget personally or do your calculations, you just want to take the temperature and see how close you're getting to what's a reasonable number. I don't think anyone is saying we're going to do the 700,000. I think, you know, Mike, Mike was suggesting we apply that to see where it put us. Okay, so I think we've got, we've got human services, public works, and what else do we have? And then, and a lot of them are like pension insurance and stuff that isn't all that cuttable. So capital, capital, we have CIP. So those three are the ones to me that, you know, still have some work or discussion.
Yeah, I mean, this is just discussion. There's no motion on it.
So this is Brenda, and I, I think that we should think of the townspeople and what they say, and I think most of them are saying responsible spending is what they want to do. So I think that we should really give a lot of thought into what we're, what we're doing here.
Yes, I agree, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. We also get a lot of feedback from the townspeople and people in present to speak saying that when we, we've had three years in a row of over 12% in the fund balance, and people have been saying you're holding too much of our money. You've, and you're holding too much of our money in that balance, and that needs to be reduced because to some people, that makes them feel they're being overtaxed. And certainly based on our policy of keeping it between eight and 12, if we have three years in a row of over 12%, it certainly seems like we're either overtaxing or underspending. Lisa, your hands up?
Yeah, Mike, I, you said that beautifully. That's what, that, I mirror that. Thank you.
Okay. Christina?
And this is one of those years, one of those bad Region 19 years, and what we usually do is plan for these years and plan to apply more fund balance during these times. So so there's that too.
That was my point about rainy day. This is a rainy day in a lot of ways, and which is also why we've reached out to Region 19 to ask for an opportunity to do more long-range planning. They haven't responded to me yet, but we have reached out to them to ask them if we can get a conversation going about projections over the years so that we would see this coming instead of having a $400,000 increase, boom, in one year. If we saw it coming, if we knew it was coming two or three years out, that would be a better planning tool for us. But we're already here. Okay, so should we go on to the next department?
Please.
Okay, so if I'm right, the next department is Public Works, right? 0311?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. I moved to accept the budget request for 0311 Public Works for the amount of $1,273,194 as a requested. Can I get a second? All right, no second on that, so we'll say the motion fails. Let's get some discussion going, see what the direction is people want to go here.
Mike?
Yes, Pete?
I'm willing to step up on this one. I, I think that now is not the time to add people to our payroll. I think that maybe next year, if we look at it and we have a clearer picture of where things are going, whether the, the, at the beginning of this, we had a discussion, some people say, are saying that the economy is going to rebound, it's going to be booming. Some people are saying it may not. I, I think we need to make a prudent decision to wait till see if that happens and to hold off on that, that position.
Okay, other board member comments?
Yeah, I would add to that, increasing the chip ceiling or, or paving operations to greater than what they were last year, and something else I would chop out.
I'm sorry, Matt, did you say you would drop out increasing chip ceiling over last year?
Yes.
Okay, because there is no increase over last year.
No, but, but then there's, it's doing as a change in, in the paving, because I remember Troy, Troy.
If you look at the budget we presented to you, in the, the chip seal program, does not have any increase in it.
Okay, how about for paving? I remember when he was talking with John Blessington, indicating he wanted to increase the number of miles paid or, or chips here.
Sure, that may have happened at some Board of Selectment meetings, but the budget that was presented to the Board of Finance that was approved by the Board of Selectmen does not have an increase in the chip seal program. So I'd encourage you to look back to the budget that we presented to you.
This is Brenda. I agree to no increase.
The, so chip seal, I'm going back through the presentation. Chip seal is 0% increase.
Correct.
Asphalt is also 0% increase.
My mistake, I, I remembered that there was an increase. Must have been mistaken.
Pete, did you? Did you have a number in mind?
I, I had a number. I believe it was $75,000, but in, in discussions earlier today, I believe it was minus the I, I can't put my fingers on it right now. I, I tried to save as many of these documents in one place as I could, and I, I seem to have lost the, that particular budget. I believe it was minus $48,000. Does that sound correct?
If, I'm trying to find my notes. I think the full, it was the salary and the 28 was the high budgeted number for insurance. If that's what you're talking about, I'm trying to find.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Insurance in another budget, if I'm.
It's in a different department. It's in a different.
I was going to mention that when we got to the other department.
So.
I lost my budget here, sorry. I, too many pages open.
Mike, could I just?
Yeah, Steph, go ahead.
48,000 is, was the salary for the new position, but we also talked about trying to up the, 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 the budget line for snow removals for, for better, more competitive prices for bidding.
Yeah, there was discussion around that area.
May not be a great idea to just slip out the whole 48,000, even if we did all agree to that that was something to do here.
I believe Erica, when she made the presentation, did say that the contractor budget had been reduced because of the addition of the employee salary. So I think you're right, Stephanie, that there's a balance in there somewhere. If the employee was completely cut at 48,000, that would also leave the money out of the budget for the contractor. Is that correct, Erica?
For two contractors, yes. We, we reduced the budget last year because we knew we only had gotten one contractor when we went out to bid, so we reduced it to 23,265. We would need to increase that for two contractors if, if you make an adjustment to this budget. And the dollar figure we were looking at was $66,150 for two contractors. That was.
Let me just make sure I understand. Erica, let me just make sure I understand that right. So in the current fiscal year, you're carrying 23 something for one contractor? And in the request, you eliminated that because you were anticipating the, it paid, the new employee would cover that work. So if the new employee was not there, say even you got approved for the new employee, but they weren't hired for whatever reason, then you would still have, you would still need one contractor, because right now you have one contractor without the new employee.
Right, we really should have two contractors. We, we had to make an adjustment with our staff, so we paid an upgrade to someone to work as a driver during those times because we didn't have anyone else. So we would go back to asking for two contractors, which I don't recommend because the amount of work that needs to be done outside of snow removal is the main reason why we would move away from snow contracting and add, ask for that additional employee. But yes, Mike, if, if you were to cut, I, I would encourage you to think about the fact that we'd need to budget in for two snow contractors. And then hope that we get to.
That's pretty much a wash. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying if you took the, yes, Stephanie, it actually to this budget.
48 versus 46.
A little bit more with the number that we would use. Because again, you know, budgeting a higher amount than we have in the past
I.
was the goal. And the difference between a staff, a, a new employee with a high insurance and snow contracting at that rate was about $10,000 between the multiple line items.
Oh. So I can be clear, we went to zero contractors. We, we were at one contractor plus extra money for employees because they were plowing. And with the new budget, you're asking for zero contractors plus another employee. And if we get rid of the employee position, then we go to, back to two contractors, but there'd be no savings from the bringing that employee back down to, to not plowing.
But, that, well, I'm not sure I understand everything you're saying, but I think I understand the gist of what you're asking, Pete. So yes, we put out a bid for two contractors and originally worked it out for two contractors. We didn't get to. And so we had to use one of our own staff members, and he worked in an upgraded position anytime he worked, doing snow removal. So.
We got two posi, if we had. So right, but if we had two, two contractors next year, that employee that was stepped up to snowplow would step back down, correct? So we'd have the savings there?
Correct.
Okay.
So what did that would mean?
You know, my solid argument was that there is, there is more than enough work to be done in Public Works outside of just snow removal. And, and we look at, you know, contractors, we get only when there's, you know, a snow weather, a snow or ice weather event. And the amount of work we have in this department is significant. We did, you know, I heard your whole conversation and your request at the library to work incrementally. You know, Public Works Director did come to the board asking for multiple staff members, and we recognize that that's just not something we can afford now, something that we could ask for, but that, that, that additional person puts us in line with all the other towns. with all the other towns that are about our size, is their staffing, is that same amount, we, so, yes, Peter?
I, I under, I understand exactly what you're saying, I'm just saying that maybe next year is the year to start a long-range project like an employee, an employee is not just a one-year, the one-year, the one-year. It's, we're, we're, we're hopefully looking for somebody that's looking for full employment for a career.
That's correct.
And I don't think that, that this year is the year to do it, and that's all I'm saying, and.
I feel like no year is the year to do it, every year, there's another reason why we can't have more staffing. I can tell you, we are bare bones in every department, we currently have someone out in the finance department, and the trickle-down effect is, it's detrimental to the work that needs to be done here, and it affects that office, affects both the Board of Ed and the town. So it doesn't take much from our staffing standpoint to really hinder operations in every department. We are already at what I think is below a minimum, and I think our money, our taxpayer dollars would be better spent with a regular employee than just a snow contractor, and I would encourage you to put this question, this to the voters to decide.
Stephanie?
It's, can we do the CIP trick, which is it, it's in the first half of the fiscal year, we're not going to need snow removal and some of that stuff, and I know we're talking year-round, but can we do this, can we leave half the money in, so that something can be done at the half-year?
And if it snows in October, what do I do?
Well, we're not saying that, I don't, I don't know that we're deciding the whole thing right now, are we? I mean, aren't we talking about doing some requests for?
We would, we would have to look at it not just as a cut, so in your example, Stephanie, I think what you're, what you're proposing would be a half-year for that salary and insurance, but that would also leave a half a year without the contractor available, and also it's unlikely to get a contractor to only work half a year. So I, that's probably the challenge there would be, how does that get covered up to January 1st, if that was the time you hired the new employee? But it would cut the salary and benefit cost in half. It just would leave them without either the employee or the contractor until the half-year mark.
Yeah, I mean, there's a savings and benefits, of course, but.
Yes, yes.
Just trying to find a solution.
Hmm, more discussion?
I'm trying to pull up the budgets here, but I got the spinning wheel of death on my computer, so.
If you, probably in the right place, Jeff, but it was in the packet for the first selectman?
I know, yeah, but this is me, I got.
Spinning wheel of death.
I'm going through my, what I've downloaded and I can't, it's anyway.
Oh, okay. I don't use quite that dramatic a term, I call it the spinning wheel of despair. But Jeff, you. Jeff, is there a number you're looking for, because I have it amongst the 57 pages on my desk here?
Well, I'm just, I, I just kind of looking at what, what was what with the. So 48,000 was the cost of the quota for extra person.
That was the salary cost, 48,000.
And the top level, what, what normal people do, you know, call benefits, that's not, that's not in Public Works, it's in.
No, that's in another department that we haven't gotten to yet, and they, Erica said they budgeted that at the max in case the person picked the family rate, which would be 28,473.
It's spread out over, I think, I believe, three different budgets, is that correct, Donna?
I mean, it would, it would all fall under employee insurances.
0831.
Yeah.
I found it now. Okay. Board discussion, we do have this as a motion at the full funding right now?
I don't think anybody seconded that, I don't think there's a motion on the table.
Oh, okay. Good, good point, as we have you. Okay. Pete, was that you?
Yeah, it was me. Seeing as how we have no second, so therefore no motion, would you like to make another motion?
Sure, would you, would you like to tell me what number you want? Do you have an idea?
I, I, I would just subtract the 48, that, that would be my motion, but I, I think you might have something else in mind and, and I, and I know you've been thinking long and hard on this, so I was going to let you come up with a number.
Okay.
And we could discuss that number and see where we're going.
Okay, so I guess something important to the discussion here is what else is in this budget that are we going to have another motion or a fail, is there other stuff in the, in this department that people want to talk about? Or shall I just make a new, try another motion?
Can I share with you some of the increases in this budget? That, you know, could potentially be affected, $10,000 in maintenance, we, I believe are overspent on maintenance as it stands. We've increased $25,000 in tree removal, that is a 100% increase, the current budget is 25,000, we're asking for 25,000 more, because the number of trees that we know of that need to come down, a thousand-dollar increase in parts and supplies, and then a $31,587 increase, that's a direct result of CIP requests.
So that is.
The other significant.
Those are lease payments, right, that show up in the CIP plan?
That is correct.
Okay, going to my CIP plan, see. So what I'm, if I have this right, what I'm seeing for lease payments, two, a new dump truck to replace the 2012 International, right? Which is that $35,020 worth of the leasing. And then below that, a replacement for the Ford F-350, and a replacement for the Ford F-450 small dump.
Yeah.
The F-350 is 7,944, and the small dump is 11,350. Yes, go ahead.
I stand with it, those, you know, need to be replaced, I believe one of them is at the shop right now, the F-450, and we know that one is in, in bad condition, and that would be fully retired, that particular vehicle. But, you know, if Peter's recommendation of cutting $48,000 out of this budget would mean we would have to make adjustments to allow for snow contracting, or have significantly longer routes, which would just not be, quite frankly, not be sustainable, or have to cut things like tree removal, and then we know that we, you know, have, we, we know there's work that needs to be done because of the condition of the trees, and, and we would have to make significant cuts elsewhere. There, there are no really, I, I don't see any wants in here, and, and so I think a $48,000 decrease to this department would be detrimental.
So in, in response to that, Erica, we've talked before about liability, I feel like that's something we should be considering in, in our deliberations, and that's why even though I thought 100% in the tree thing caught my attention, looking at the trees around, it's very evident that there are a lot of dangerous hanging dead trees out there. So I, I see that as a, it's a safety, it's a public safety essential. I guess my feeling is if we're looking for the cut, can we get away, so if we were to, the discussion is taking away the employee, but then we would need to put some money back for snow contractor. The, the other thing is, the only other place where we could possibly hold off is if you got the F-350 and the F-450 replaced, pushing out the, the big dump truck, the $35,000 lease one year.
I think we did that last year, Mike, again, I, I stand behind it, I think that that's incredibly necessary to do. We, we put it off last year, and we had significant repairs on vehicles this year, so I think we're just.
I understand that, but we also did buy a brand-new $175,000 dump truck last year, too.
Yes, we did.
So I'm just trying to figure out where we can manage the taxpayers' money here. So if we, so if we took $25,000 out of the employee instead of 48, that would leave money for a snow contractor, which would put you where you are this year right now. Instead of cutting the whole 48, that would leave us the health insurance to cut later in another department. And then the only other thing that I can see is if we pushed that dump truck out, that would save us 35,000 this year in lease. So that's basically 60,000 between those two.
I could support that, Mike.
Mike, 60,000 between those two plus the benefits?
Yeah, because that's in this budget line, the benefits is later.
No, I know, but I meant the total would be.
Yes, right, there would be another 28,000 something coming in the benefits line later. So I guess that, I guess that rolls out to an $88,000 cut between the two departments. Discussion? Matt, were you?
Yeah, I, no. Seems like a fairly good compromise, it's not in the form of a motion, but I think it's something that, that might be acceptable, I guess.
All right, I'm just, give me a minute, because I'm trying to calculate here and see what the. I'm just trying to figure out the percentage. That brings it, if I've done my math right, it brings it down to a, basically a 2.5% increase in Public Works?
Thanks for doing that.
I came out with .2045, so I guess would round, yeah, round, yeah, anyway. All right, do we have a motion? Do we have interest in a motion?
I have any interest in a motion in whatever you said there, Mike.
I'll second the motion to whatever you said there, Mike.
All right, then I guess I should make a motion.
That would, that would be very helpful.
Hang on, I need to, a little more math here. I moved to accept the budget for Department 0311 Public Works for the amount of $1,213,194.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Did we beat it to death already?
That's a 2.5% increase, and it doesn't include fund, well, well, 2.5% increase, right?
If I've got my math right. Donna, my, did I do that right?
It, it, it doesn't include any salary increase that might come out of the union negotiations, right?
None of, none of them do.
Right, so, so next, like, say this, this goes ahead, next year at this time, whatever that adds to the bottom line is going to make it that much higher, it's just another thing to think about. I mean, but maybe, maybe it won't be that much, you don't know.
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, I just want to ask Donna, what, what exactly is the increase on that, Donna?
The increase should be $29,029, if I've done my math right.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, but not compared to something.
But it's a $1.2 million budget. So on a, on a $1.2 million budget, it's a very small amount. Okay, any more discussion? Marissa?
Matt?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes. No, no.
Was that no to me or no to?
No, it's a yes, I'm just answering, my dog is not in the house.
Okay, all right, Jeff?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Six, yes?
Okay, next, I moved to accept the budget request for 0513 Human Services for $53,488.
Yes, a second.
Yes, a second. Discussion?
Can we just ask about the, I'm, I'm just confused, because I thought the camp, the, the cut from the camp didn't really affect the bottom line in rec, but does it change the bottom line here? No.
No, so it's similar, the, the dollars that are allocated are covering the administrative costs. So the camp, similar, just the same way it did on the Parks and Rec side, funds typically funds itself.
Right.
So the expenses are covered by its revenue.
Wait a minute, I was under the understanding that, that there was no more camp coming out of the human services.
That is correct, last week, I think there were questions about if that happened, why would the increase, why would there be an increase in human services?
Right, and, and I, even though I believe the increase in human services is around 7%, I, I think that now is, is the time where we want to increase human services, if ever there was a time.
Right, and, and I will tell you that that dollar amount doesn't even cover all of the administrative costs. So if you look at the budget that Jenny presented to you all in February, and what those administrative costs are, they're not even covered by the request from the general fund transfer. Even though there's an increase.
The, the number was, it's a $3,900 increase, which is 7.9%, because it's a small budget.
What did I say, seven?
Yeah, I think so, I don't know, a lot of numbers here.
Seven, seven, nine, it's, whatever it is, Jenny needs the money.
Okay, any other board discussion? All right, Marissa, call the vote, please.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Matt?
Well.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, give me just a second, I'm catching up my notes here. Okay. Next department should be employee, those I believe. I move to accept. Oh, no, hang on, I'm on the, I just went to the wrong line here. Hang on, I messed up my notes.
Oh, eight thirty one, right?
Yes, I had my papers all in the wrong order here.
What was the vote count on that one, on that one that just passed on Human Services?
Uh, six yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so yes. Department zero eight thirty one, I move to accept the budget request for Department zero eight thirty one Employee Insurances for the amount of two hundred and sixty five thousand one hundred and sixty. Second.
Second.
Okay, and just for discussion point, the reason that number is different from the requested is that insurance change because of the for the public works employee, I subtracted the record had given us of twenty eight four seventy three from the original request.
What was that number again, Mike, two six?
Two six five one six oh.
Thanks.
Discussion. All right, let's vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
All right, moving on. I move to accept the budget request for Department zero eight four one Pension for fifty five thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Second.
All right, discussion. Okay, let's vote.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Pete?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, six yes.
I move to accept the budget request for zero eight five one Insurances for ninety three thousand seven hundred and fifteen.
Second.
Discussion. No, no discussion. Let's vote.
Jeff?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt? Christina?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, I move to accept the budget request for zero eight seven one Miscellaneous for one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
Erica, just remind us what's in Miscellaneous, please.
If we were to send flowers to somebody, if we needed to do, you know, something similar like that.
Sort of a good welfare type of thing.
Welfare, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
What's, Mike, can you repeat the line item, how much it is? I'm sorry.
One thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion. All right, let's vote.
Matt?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Five yes, one no. Mike, you're muted, I'm not sure if you're talking.
Oh, I was muted, sorry, thank you. I move to accept the budget request for zero nine one zero Debt Services for two hundred and four thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is this is bond payments on library and things like that, right?
Yeah, Donna, can you just give us the quick hit on what this debt services covers?
Donna, I'm not sure if you're speaking yet.
Thank you.
Here you are, Donna.
So it is, yep, it is the bond payment and interest payment for the library and also there is a couple of lease payments in there, lease payment for the Doug Warden's truck and a lease payment for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Thank you. Matt, were you saying something there?
No. Internal thinking coming through my lips.
Okay. Well, you know, with the Zoom, your lips were moving and I wasn't sure if we just didn't hear you, so.
Thanks for checking in.
Yep.
And and Mike?
Yes.
And can you speak to whether it's important for firefighters to breathe?
Yes, since you handed me that softball, thank you. Yes, the we have lucked out in the past and at times we've been able to update and upgrade breathing apparatus through grants. They have not been available or successfully applied for lately. And so the town is carrying the cost, the the systems have to be upgraded every so often and the tanks are very strictly sunsetted after a certain age, and so that is why we are leasing to purchase that equipment.
I just want you to know that on the blue line side that we believe that you're anaerobic, so.
Yeah, I'll leave the rest, I'll leave my response out. For the good of the order.
And I think when when I was looking at the annual report, I think we have five years left to go on on the the bond payments for the library, is that correct? Either four or five, I think it's five.
It is twenty twenty seven.
Five, after this.
Yep.
At a hundred and three thousand per year, about.
Well, it goes down slightly each year, so this, the budget year we're talking about is a hundred and eighty three thousand. The next budget year will be a hundred and seventy seven and then one seventy one, so on and so forth.
Understood, thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay. I move to accept the budget request for zero nine three zero Capital Expenditures for two hundred and twenty eight thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars.
What was that number again, please, Mike?
Two hundred and twenty eight thousand eight hundred and sixty four.
And last year that was how much?
Let's see.
Donna's looking through, I can see you. Thank you.
It was if my numbers are right, it was sixty three thousand five sixty five. Donna's saying, yes, that's correct, and the reason the reason for that change is because we went into austerity mode in the current fiscal year budget because of COVID, and we we essentially redlined almost all capital programs that were not already committed with the exception of a couple. So we had a, we had a dip down year during the current fiscal year and now we're coming back up to capital on normal capital program. Is that fair? To say, I believe that is.
That motion has not been seconded.
Oh, good point. Can I get a second for discussion purposes?
Second.
Thank you. More discussion? All right, let's vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
I move to accept the budget request for Department zero eight six one Board of Finance Contingency for the amount of zero dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
On that one, Stephanie.
Zero growth.
I'd just like to point out that that is a flat zero percent increase.
Thank you for that update, Mike.
Well, you know, the numbers up front for everyone. Okay. Shall we vote?
Matt?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Steph?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, I move to accept the budget request for Board of Education for the amount of eight million nine hundred and sixty two thousand and nine dollars. I get a second?
I will second for discussion.
Thank you. All right, let's have discussion.
Can I start?
Of course.
I would very, very much, I I'm gonna say two things that are gonna sound extremely contradictory here. First, I would like to very much thank Superintendent Stevens in the Board of Ed for taking very, very seriously our request to come in as close to zero as possible. I believe they're at one five?
One point one.
One point one, which is a phenomenal number. The next thing I want to say is is there some way we can bring that to zero and replace the money with the non circulating money that they returned last year, and I say that only because if we go for zero and then give them the money out of that account, it doesn't increase our MBR, and I believe we have the money there to do it. And so while that number is extremely good and 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 I don't want Superintendent Stevens to think that I think anything else, I I would really like to fund that slightly differently only to protect our MBR for the future.
Are you talking about the non-lapsing fund, Pete? Is that?
Yes, that would be what I'm talking about, and I forgive me for not having my
That's fine, that's fine. Phil, Mr. Stevens, I'm sorry, Superintendent Stevens, in this case, on the technical aspects of that comment.
I think that the Board of Ed has to request that, am I correct on that?
Yes. Yes.
The Board of Ed has to request using the money from the non-lapsing fund into the budget, is that what you're saying?
I believe that is the case, correct?
Yes, and I believe it even has to be a town meeting to spend it.
Yeah.
Out of that fund.
And I think that's statutory, right?
Yes. Yes, and I'm not sure you can use it on operating, I think it's kind of specific for capital and special ed.
I I believe that a large percentage of our 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 budget is special ed, I've heard that over and over again from both the Board of Ed and from from the superintendent, so I I don't see where a hundred thousand dollars is 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 going to make a huge dent, and I I cannot see the town not approving that money for special education, so I I I know that it's an extra step, but I'd like to see us take that extra step just to protect the the town's finances. And and I I see the first select woman that is incredulous on this.
I think it's a slippery slope, you're using that money to offset a budget, I I think you should
I I I am. I'm doing exactly that, and and I'm doing it for one year and I'm doing it in a year in which which the Board of Ed returned a a fair chunk of money because they they had the money from a bus is not running and that kind of thing, and I I I'd just like to protect it for this one year, and I I think that that's not an unreasonable request, and and there may be those that disagree with me, but I I'd like to see us do that, approve it at zero percent with with the COTUSIL that that we will definitely support the Board of Ed in requesting the additional money through the through the non-lapsing fund.
So I like this idea, Pete, because of the preventing the hundred and one thousand dollar increase in the MBR. But I'm not sure, I guess hindsight being twenty twenty, I guess we should have asked this question a few weeks ago.
When you're done, Mike.
Go ahead.
Peter, I know you're concerned about MBR and there are several things in that budget, Mr. Stevens, if I'm correct, that are directly COVID related. There is a bill that I testified in favor of that would prevent COVID, these COVID expenses from being subject to MBR and increasing your MBR, and there has been some bipartisan support on that. Obviously, it's a bill and nothing has has been finalized yet, but I think there's some momentum towards not making those expenses relatable to MBRs, they were, you know, what we hope to be, one now, two time.
Well, I appreciate that, Erica, I I I really appreciate that that sentiment. The reason that our taxes went up a couple of years ago was because the governor told us that if we increased our taxes to cover the teacher retirement benefits, it would not affect our our MBR, at which point he changed his mind that he wasn't charging us, but we had already changed our our budgeting, and we did not take that into account, I thought that we did the prudent thing at the time, but it turned out to be very imprudent in in hindsight, and and what I really like to do is prevent us from increasing that MBR if we don't have to, and I I don't think in this case we have to.
All right, more discussion on the motion? All right. Marissa, let's uh call the vote. The motion is the request as submitted. So Marissa, let's call the vote.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Pete?
Oh.
Mike?
Yes.
Four yes, two no.
Okay, that is the last department expense wise. Donna, are you up to date on your magic sheet?
Uh, yes, I am. I I didn't hear a motion for the pension. That's between employee insurances and insurances. It's 841.
Yep.
Did I miss it?
We did approve it as.
Did it at 55? Yep, 55 for 78. Okay, got it.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So then um I will screen share and show you what I have.
Okay.
I added in the $300,000 extras to the fund balance application. And it is showing that the mil rate would be 30.89, an increase of .9 mils.
And um as your number on the bottom indicates, uh, $89.66 increase per 100,000.
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Do we have to do region 19?
No, approved by the taxpayers.
Whether whether regardless of whether we tell send it to them or not?
We don't, we don't have purview on it.
Okay.
It's its own quest, it's its own question on the referendum, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've made our appropriations. Obviously, the number that I asked Donna to apply was purely a suggestion. It leaves us for discussion purposes, it leaves us at a less than 1 mil increase and it leaves us at I think 10, about 10 and a quarter is, uh, hang on, I'll go down on my sheet here. What do you have for a percentage in the fund balance, Donna? Have you done that yet?
Um, it would be about 10.4%.
10.4?
If it was, and even Steven, 700,000, it would be 10.4. And so you want it to be 7,230. And that doesn't change. It's 10.4%.
10.4, so it's about 10 and a half percent. Or are you saying 10.04?
10.4.
10.4, okay, so it's 10 and a half percent. So it's still above halfway between our eight and 12.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I I I like that number where it is, but that's just because I helped make it up, so. Well, we're being honest here, right?
So apologize for my outburst.
Where did we end up in terms of spending increase for this year?
Let's see. I think, oh, I don't have that number. My magic sheet doesn't do that. Donna, are you able to tell us what the expend budget is as we've now devised it compared to the current fiscal year?
Sure. I I think I could come up with that for you.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, maybe not that fast, sorry.
Matt, if you want to hang on, if people don't mind hanging on a second, I'm going to take a shot at my I might be able to create.
I just have, I apologize. I have numbers everywhere on my paper, so.
Yeah, so do I. Apologize to everyone for the moment of silence here, but just hang on while we do a little calculating.
Hi.
Hi. All right, um. I feel like I may have lost something in the mix here, but I see. Donna, do you mind if I interrupt your?
You can interrupt.
I see an expenditure, am I right, about 18,550? Did I get the number right?
Yes, I see 18,550,547.
Okay. Which is about a $800,000 increase over the current fiscal year.
Yes, it's exactly 778,028 or 4.38%.
Okay, there we go. So it's a it's a little under a 5% increase over the current fiscal year.
That includes, that includes region 10 and if I remember correctly, region 10 was up. Um, I don't remember exactly the amount, but it was.
That includes the $400,000 increase in region 19, yes.
Sorry.
Yep.
Mike, what, could you repeat the percentage?
Uh, 4.8 something.
Okay.
Yeah, 4.38.
I'm sorry, 4.38. So it's a four, it's under four and a half. I'm sorry, I I heard it as 483.
Currently, currently we're looking at putting the um so we're 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 at a uh eight, 740 or 770,000 dollar increase and we're looking at um funding that partially with a $300,000 um transfer from general fund, right?
300,000 additional transfer. We've typically been transferring about 400. And so this is a 700 this year, which brings us from the 12% down to the 10 and a quarter, uh, 10.4%.
Can we do 600? We we only did 400 last year? I thought we did more like 600 last year.
Uh, 400 had been the typical. I think we went up to 600 last year because there was a significant, and that still kept us above 12.
Right.
Uh, Mike, I believe that we were at 600 last year because 600 was typical. We went to 400 this year because that brought us down to 12. And 12 was top of where we were. So if we went from uh four to seven, that's only 10 more than normal and that's not a bad thing.
Right, it reduces the amount of taxpayer money we're holding too.
Lastly, lastly, positions us well for for negotiations. Sorry about the background noise.
Yes, um, it does help that concern of holding a lot of money in negotiating years, correct? Okay, great. Okay, so new business, a budget appropriations, that was our only order of business, our only agenda item.
We don't need to set a mil rate?
No, that happens later.
Okay.
Um, so at this point, what this essentially does is this creates a budget packet that Donna will compile and that will be the public, that will be what's going out to the public in the warning of the hearing. Um, and then the results of the hearing will lead us to the vote. Right, Donna, have that, I have that order correct?
Yes.
Okay. Correspondence, there were only a couple of items since Thursday's meeting. You got it, um, sent to you and um so that brings us back to present to speak. So as we typically do, those of you who are in video, if you'd like to speak, wave your hand, please. And then we'll get to the non-video people as well.
Peter, let's. Peter, we'll turn to 97 Fast Road. Two questions. The first, uh, what efforts are we making to have the public hearing? And then subsequently the town meeting as in-person meetings? Um, and secondly, whether they're in person or Zoom, and I certainly hope we're making every effort to make them in person. Can we have, which seems to be a lost in recent years, a budget presenter to present each budget formally uh from the general government side and the education side? I think that was helpful in the past for townspeople to be able to understand the budget. Better during a public hearing and town meeting. What seems to happen more in more recent years is that someone comes in, says there's budgets in the back of the room. If you want to look at them, any questions? And and then the uh selectman's question is is read and approved to go to a referendum. So I think it would be helpful to have more rather than less information in a comprehensive review of each budget at both of those meetings. Thank you.
I would just like to comment on one item there only because it is about us moving forward. For everyone, uh, to respond to the question about what mode the meeting will be in. Uh, I am anxiously awaiting any updates from the governor's directives or the expiration of the governor's orders. And my feeling is we want to have this meeting to be in as many modes as possible because I want the broadest access for the taxpayer. So I'll just leave that as a comment on that. Um, Mr. Stevens, go ahead.
I'll be quick. Phil Stevens, superintendent, just uh wanted to say thank you for the support for the education budget, number one. And number two, I just want to just give a shout out to Donna. She's been down a person in her office and and working very hard. And during this time of all the extra work that she's done for COVID, I don't think she's recognized by folks for all of the work that she's done with all of the grants. Um, and I know how challenging it is to update the numbers that you have live. And you know, while you wait, she's trying to do all those things. So kudos to Donna for for keeping up and and all your work and and thank you for for all your support, Donna.
Thank you, Phil.
Amen. Uh, others present to speak in video, wave your hand, please. Uh, Anne Grouse.
I just want to um echo Phil's, thanks for your support of our budget. We tried really hard to keep it down and um really support that that it was able to work. Thank you all so much.
Okay, I think that's everyone who's in video. Uh, anybody else in video, wave your hand? All right, anyone who's not in video who would like to speak, please unmute and call out your name. All right, thank you all for your participation. I just let's see, yes, okay, so um in good and welfare, yes, I'd like to echo echo the thanks to Donna and really to everybody who's contributed, all the budget submitters, all the members of the Board of Finance. This is a difficult process. Um, we're doing it a lot smoother than we did this past year because we've had a year of practice doing it in this weird way, but um a lot of effort and a lot of thought went into all of this from all parties. And uh, I guess that's it. Does anyone else have anything for good and welfare?
During, I'd like to adjourn.
You should make that motion then.
I would like to move to adjourn.
We got a second? Okay. Bye, thank you all.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.